...from the other fascists in Europe, from Hitler and Mussolini. The Spanish Republic, they're thought to be too socialistic, possibly communist. No one in Europe is going to want to assist them, except Russia. Russia will assist the Spanish Republic. So if I have a question that says, "Who provided the only official support for the Spanish Republic?", it's going to be the communists. It's going to be the Soviet Union, Russia. Now, what about the Lincoln Battalion? The Lincoln Battalion was a number of volunteers from America, and these volunteers were two to three hundred in number. These are volunteers from America, not part of the government, people who simply went over to assist the Spanish Republic in the fight against fascism. They were smart enough to understand the dangers of fascism in Europe at the time. Now, the revisionist view of this is two thousand to three thousand, and that means that they've just redefined the term. Two to three thousand is an indication of everyone around the world who volunteered, who went to assist the Spanish Republic in the fight against Francisco Franco via fascists. So again, the Spanish Civil War, there's the Lincoln Battalion for you. Then the Munich Conference. The Munich Conference is about Czechoslovakia, so the Sudetenland region, this is about a third of Czechoslovakia. Hitler has his troops on the border, ready to take it. And at the Munich Conference Neville Chamberlain's going to step up before the podium, he's going to have a sheet of paper, and he's going to say, "I have in my hands peace in our time." Peace in our time. And so he's going, Neville Chamberlain's going to kind of deal with Hitler to avoid war by giving Hitler a third of Czechoslovakia. Now Hitler's going to take the rest in the spring. But this is the prime example of appeasement. Neville Chamberlain, peace in our time, and again, this deals with Czechoslovakia. So we're good on that. There's Neville Chamberlain, peace in our time. Battle for Britain. The battle for Britain's in the skies over Britain, and the radar is the device by which the English will be victorious. Radar. Radar, they'll defeat the Luftwaffe. So good on that, Royal Air Force radar. Tokyo Napalm. In the spring of 1945, they used incendiary bombs against the Japanese in Tokyo, fire bombs. And these fire bombs are going to kill eighty-three thousand people. And I just mentioned that as kind of in contrast to the atomic bombs, because I've got colleagues say, "Oh, the atomic bombs, evil incidents and that," and all of that. And then when I might ask them about, "What about the napalm in Tokyo, eighty-three thousand people die?", they'll say, "Well, war is hell," and that's just what happens in war. And so I was just trying to use it as that contrast. Where I come from, that many people died, there's not a good side or a bad side. So I kind of used it in that. If you want to be aware of incendiary bombs, eighty-three thousand dead in Tokyo, and I compare it to the atomic bomb. And those of you who were with us from the movie the other day on Radio Martini, you have a really fair idea now how little we knew about the atomic bomb when we talked it on the Japanese. So it might put it in a different light for you, like you might have previously viewed it. So John Foster Dulles. Dulles is the Secretary of State under Eisenhower. There's a question that's going to ask you, "Who's the major contributor to the foreign policy in the 1950s?", and it's going to be John Foster Dulles. He comes up with liberation and mass retaliation and all those other policies. John Foster Dulles. The St. Louis is that ship that left Hamburg, Germany, right after the Night of the Broken Glass. Nine hundred desperate Jews wanting asylum, promised asylum in Central America. It ended up being a hoax. Kicked out of Miami by the immigration officials, back to Europe. And the traditional view is they were rounded up and sent to the concentration camps. The revisionist view is that they had money, bought their way to France, didn't get sent to the concentration camps until very late in the war. Thus, there were a number of them that survived the concentration camps. Okay, the St. Louis, nine hundred and some desperate Jews looking for asylum. Six million Jews died in the Holocaust. The final solution is Hitler's, Hitler's final solution is simply the Holocaust. Remember Hitler's war aims, or Hitler's aims. He wants to eliminate the people in Eastern Europe and those he views to be imperial. So the final solution is absence, the Holocaust. Operation Magics, the attempt to decipher the Japanese coast before Pearl Harbor. The operation is successful, though Pearl Harbor occurs anyway. Pearl Harbor, December 7th, 1941, which is on the test. Arsenal for Democracy, not on the test. Tripartite Pact, that means three. This is the Axis Powers. This would be Japan, this would be Germany, and this would be Italy. Axis Powers. Manhattan Project, Albert Einstein's catalyst for this, and this is the atomic bomb program. Orochman Agasaki, where the atomic bombs are dropped, that's on the test. Appeasement, I'll take you down to the bottom of the Lecture Study Guide where it says, "Swy'd England and France appease Germany." And you'll see that on the World War II handout, and this is item number three. There's, let's see, three, six, seven reasons. I'll have a multiple choice question. It'll ask you all the following are reasons for the appeasement of Germany except. So I checked out all the World War II handout. Again, I'm going to, I'm trying to do this real quick because I've got this other stuff that I want you to hear before you get out of here, okay? You've heard most of this, you know, in class, I hope. So let me, Cold War. The Cold War's on the test, probably a multiple choice question. Let's start with the Cold War handout. It gives you the definition and the characteristics. Okay? And let's see, then I've got the charters, the conferences. This is, deals with Casablanca, Tehran, Moscow, Yalta, and Potsdam. And what you need to be able to do for those conferences and agreements and all that other stuff, is to be able to say, these are World War II situations, you need to be able to say, where did it occur, who were the participants, what happened? I'm going to do one of these because, again, I need to get to the, there's an essay on the comprehensive, I'll be able to talk to you about that. So we have the Potsdam. This is in Germany. We're going to see some new faces at Potsdam. Eric Truman's going to be, he's now President of the United States, FDR has died in April. We're going to see Stalin there, we're going to see Churchill there. Churchill's going to be removed from office in an election, and he's going to be replaced by Richard Athlee. So I've got a question that says, "All the following were Potsdam except." And except is brought with Franklin Delano Roosevelt because he has passed in April '45. Now, I've also, a couple of other things. So what happens? Well, what happens is that the baby's been delivered. The atomic bomb has been tested successfully, message to Truman. We also are going to have the Potsdam Declaration. The Potsdam Declaration's a warning to Japan that we have the atomic bomb and we intend to use it. Now, they don't tell them what we have, but there's this announcement by Truman, the Japanese need to surrender. If they do not surrender, they will face prompt and utter destruction. So that is the warning for the atomic bomb. I know it's not much of a warning, but it's a warning nonetheless, as such. So that's an example of what we're looking for. So be able to go through the Atlantic Charter and the others, you can say where, who, and what result. And again, there's probably four or five questions from there. Check that out. And Treaty of Portsmouth. The Treaty of Portsmouth is from the 1904 Russia-Japanese War. In 1905, you have the Treaty of Portsmouth, it's Portsmouth, New Hampshire. The arbitrator is the President of the United States, Adama Roosevelt. The Japanese go home angry, they didn't feel they were treated very fairly by the arbitrator, the President of the United States. So we've got that. And let's see, I've been in this other. CIA, Central Intelligence Agency. Pick up on that again, there's Potsdam, we're good. Marxist Destiny, 1946. Stalin says, "I'm going to go out and spread communism around the world." Response to this is Churchill's Arm Curtain speech. Yes, the Cold War's going on. Europe's divided between us and them. Francis Gary Powers. The U-25 plane pilot was shot down east of the European mountains in the Soviet Union. U-25 pilot. Department, let's see, National Security Act. The National Security Act's on the test, and I'm looking at it as having three parts to it. The, this could appear as a multiple choice question or as an ID question. If you know the answer, you can do either one here, okay? So the National Security Act is about reformatting the government so we're fighting communism. It creates the Department of Defense. It creates the CIA. It creates the National Security Council, NSC, big tank for the President. Wilson's Quotes on the test. Sputnik is the first satellite ever in outer space, and it's the Soviet Union, Sputnik. NATO, North Atlantic Treaty Organization. And this is a possible identification question. So NATO, North Atlantic Treaty Organization. This is defending Western Europe from Communist Europe. Now, the communists have their own NATO, and the Communist NATO is known as the Warsaw The Warsaw Pact. So if I ask you on the test, the Russian NATO is, would be the Warsaw Pact. There to defend the Communist Eastern Europe from the democracy Western Europe. So we both have similar type of alliances. I've got NFC 68. NFC 68 is National Security Council, Paper Number 68. And this is that the United States has looked around the world to see who certified communism. They can't find any takers but the United States. Everyone else is weak after World War II. So we become the policemen of the world against communism. This is NFC 68. I've got the Fall of China. With the fall of China, we're going to see Mao Zedong, the communist leader, is going to drive Chiang Kai-shek, the leader of China that supported the United States. Chiang Kai-shek's going to be forced to a place called Taiwan. At the time, it's called Formosa, Taiwan. So we've got Mao Zedong, Mao, is going to take control of China, bring it under control of the communists. And Chiang Kai-shek, who's a fascist who we support, is going to make his way to Taiwan, and that's just what the Taiwan is today. So Fall of China. Now, remember also the fall of China's plays into something else we talked about, and that's the Red Scare. Remember that fear of communism, that mass hysteria of communism. So the Red Scare is caused because the Russians get the atomic bomb early. It's caused because, 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 because of the, because I'm going to damn fast here. It's also the fall of China, and it's the Korean War. So the Red Scare, Korean War, fall of China, Russians get the atomic bomb early, it creates the Red Scare, Chomikarti's, I've got a list of 200 known communists in the State Department. So we're good on that. Korean War, Mao Zedong. August 8th, 1945, the Russians enter the war, World War II, against the Japanese. Also the day, the Japanese tried to get the Russians to pass on a conditional surrender to the United States, as they used to do. Let's see, Ike Eisenhower, we're good on that. Liberation, Mutual Defense Packs, Containment, let me run through those. I've got a, let me pass my notes right now. I've got an essay question about this, and I'll talk about the essay question for you. It'll be better when you hear it from that college, okay? So I've got that. Let me go down to Afghanistan. And Afghanistan is the Russian Vietnam. And also, remember Afghanistan's where we ended up at after 9/11. And the Afghans were using our own weapons upon us, as we'd given them weapons to fight the Russians. And Afghanistan is an example of sharing a common enemy and then turning around and fighting the individuals you've been aligned with when you were fighting the communists. So Afghanistan. Also, for Afghanistan, there's something called the Carter Doctrine. And the Carter Doctrine, Carter thought it was an invasion of Afghanistan. Again, I believe it's an invitation to Afghanistan. Carter was fearful that the Russians had their eye on the oil fields in the Persian Gulf. So it's a warning to the Russians, "If you're coming to the Persian Gulf, we'll have war." So that's our Afghani two situations there. And the Tieten is simply coexistence, coexistence between the Soviet Union and the United States. Starts with Eisenhower, or starts with LBJ and Khrushchev, ends with Ronald Reagan when Reagan comes to power. Those Reagan views see Russians to be the evil empire, and used to not going to be friendly to them in the beginning. More Bang for a Buck is mass retaliation, let me throw that in. Missile Gap is Kennedy's election in 1960. He claims the Russians have more weapons than we do. It's a, it's not true, but nonetheless, Kennedy runs on that situation. Kennedy starts the arms race because of that. He promises to build missiles when he comes into power. He comes into power, he builds missiles, he starts the arms race, leads us to the point where we all have over 10,000 nuclear weapons, Russians, the Americans, each of us possess that many. The Contras were the, I doubt it's on the test, but they were the group supported by the United States against the Sandinistas in Nicaragua, Communist Social System Power, Ortega, and, not Ortega, but a communist leader was in power, and so we supported the Contras. If you wanted to hear some of that, you could listen to the Clash, it's the CD called The Sandinistas, that's who they were fighting, the Contras. Daniel Ortega was in charge of Nicaragua at that time. Carter Doctrine, Marshall Plan. Marshall Plan's on the test, and the Marshall Plan is the European Recovery Program. We're going to rebuild Europe. We've got like 12.4 billion dollars, to spend the money in the United States to get, create jobs for attorney servicemen, and going to rebuild Europe. Marshall Plan, European Recovery Program. Berlin Blockade goes back to, Germany's been divided into two pieces. Here's Berlin, it's a free city, one size democracy, one size communism, some places are roadblocks, this is the Berlin Blockade. We end up supplying supplies into, into West Berlin, this is called the Berlin Airlift. The question would ask you, "What are we airlifting in the Berlin Airlift?" We're not sending in troops, we're not evacuating people, we're sending in supplies, coal, food, medicine, things like that. So the Berlin Airlift, that's tied into the Berlin Blockade. There's the National Security Council, there's December 7th, there's Warsaw Pact, we do that. I'm going to do these others, we'll do counterinsurgency here in a minute. Cuban Missile Crisis and the Bay of Pigs. I would imagine both of these will be on the test, some tests will be the, it will be an identification question, on the other test, the other will be identification question. There'll be a multiple choice question also. So one, between these two, they're both going to be on the test, and so they're tied together as such. Bay of Pigs Invasion, planned by Eisenhower for the invasion of Cuba to overthrow Fidel Castro. Cuban Exiles, trained in Guatemala by the CIA. Kennedy comes into power, likes the plan, wants to implement it, gets it, the invasion started, and he gets coal sheet. He does not provide any type of military support for the amphibious invasion. Castro is there waiting with his troops, and he hammers the Cuban exiles. Now, the next thing is the Cuban Missile Crisis. Well, the Cuban Missile Crisis, if you want to avoid a major war, what's going to happen? The missiles have been put in Cuba. The missiles were intended to stop the Americans from ever invading again Cuba. Kennedy's going to confront Khrushchev. It appears that Kennedy's going to take a step back. In all actuality, he's not taking a step back. Our, Kennedy's, let me do this again, I'm doing it quick. Kennedy's going to appear to stood tall, and Khrushchev stepped back. And that's why the example for brinksmanship is Kennedy, the Cuban Missile Crisis. In all actuality, we discovered later that both had taken a step back. So it's not a very good example after 1989. So Bay of Pigs Invasion, failed invasion, attempted takeover Castro. Cuban Missile Crisis again, missiles in Cuba, brings us to the possible break of war. They both agree to step back, remove the missiles from Cuba. Kennedy agrees never to invade, the United States will never invade Cuba again. So we're good on that. Hoover's Offer to England. Hoover's Offer to England's right under the characterization from war to peace again, Young Plan, Dulles Plan. 1929, British Recep and Offer from Hoover, President Hoover, to trade their debt for British Hunter for Mutant Trinidad. Seems rather obscure, but in all actuality, it tells us at this time, the United States are still imperialist, they're still willing to take from third parties, other countries in exchange for debt or whatever else. So check that out. And I've got the Greater East Asian Co-Prosperity Sphere. The Greater East Asian Co-Prosperity Sphere is a Japanese manifest destiny. Military Industrial Complex, Eisenhower, warning about the buildup of Nazi, well, amounts of weapons during times of peace. The prime example of that from Reagan's first term in office. Non-Aggression Pact, the Nazi-Soviet Pact, that's going to be the Nazis and the communists. So I'll ask you on the test, if I ask you this, it'll be, who are the members of the Non-Aggression Pact in 1939? Soviet Union and Germany. And let's see, I did the baby's been delivered. Foreign Policy aims on the World War II handout, is item number two. Check that out. Let's see, I've got, how did the United States officially end World War I? We ended World War I not by signing the Treaty of Versailles, but President Harding signed a treaty in 1921 that stated war with Germany was over. It was a, just a agreement drawn out by Congress. So Harding was the individual that we're dealing with on that. And Independent Internationalism. This is also from war to peace, where it says, "United States isolationism is misleading." The United States is not an isolationist country. We're not back in America after World War I like an ostrich with our head in the sand, not paying attention to the rest of the world. We're not spending money around the world. We don't join the other clubs in the world because we don't want them to tell us what to do. We're just a become those powerful nations in the world, and we don't want any limitations at this particular time. That's independent internationalism. We're not isolationists. And I did England and France appease Germany. So let me run through this other quickly because I want to really spend this time with you on the, on the comprehensive portion. So here we go. I am not going to have Petrograd on the, on the test. The Bolsheviks are the moderate Marxists, they start the Russian Revolution, and then the Russian Revolution's taken over very quickly by the radical Marxists, the radical communists, that's the Bolsheviks. So just like the French Revolution, the moderate group starts the revolution, and then the radicals come in the second stage. And this, we don't ever get to the third stage. So we're good on that. The Talitarian Impostor's on the test. The White Army is the, in the Russian Civil War, the White Army is the army that's opposed to the Red Army. The Red Army's the communists. They lose, the White Army. Man of Steel is Stalin, Stalin. The Black Shirts were the supporters Mussolini. These are the reading questions. The Black Shirts are supporters of Mussolini. Hitler's troops supporters were brown shirts. Chiang Kai-shek supporters in China were the blue shirts. He's a fascist also. All the fascists are shirt colors. So that's the Italians. Pope Pius XI, the Lateran Accord. The Lateran Accord is an agreement between the Roman Catholic Church and Mussolini in Italy. Mussolini's going to give the Roman Catholic Church money. He's going to make the Roman Catholic faith the faith of the sacred religion of Italy, and he's also going to create Vatican City. The Vatican City. Vatican City, that separate entity that's controlled by the Pope, by the Roman Catholic Church, that was from Mussolini. What's Mussolini going to get from the Roman Catholic Church? The Roman Catholic Church is going to agree that they're not going to criticize him or condemn him for any actions he might take. Big mistake. Big mistake, they're still apologizing about that today. So that's the Lateran Accord. Battle of Granes for Self-Sufficiency in Italy. The idea that they're going to be able to feed themselves. Everything else goes to hell when they do that. They can only concentrate on one thing at a time. Spartacus Revolt. The Spartacus Party is the communist party in Germany. The Be My Republic, that's that new German republic that comes at the end of World War I. November Criminals, not on the test. Joseph Goebbels, Goebbels, not on the test. Nazi, not on the test. Mein Kampf is Hitler's book he writes, flies in prison for the failed Beer Hall push, the attempt to take over the German government. They throw him in prison, Hitler writes Mein Kampf, that's the reference book for the Nazi movement. Hitler is the SS, he's in charge of the SS after the Night of the Long Knives, and that's the SS is Hitler's private, Stormtroopers' private army. It's his private army. Break the Wrath, that's John Steinbeck's book about the Dust Bowl out in Kansas. For Whom the Bell Is Told, that's Ernest Hemingway's book about the Spanish Civil War. Fuhrer is a title that Hitler uses. Mussolini would use El Zitchi, which would be the leader. So that's his title, but to be president, he's Fuhrer. Gestapo would be the secret police. The Night of the Broken Glass is the night that, if you've seen Schiller's List, when the Stormtroopers go into the ghetto where the Jews live, beat up the Jews, put the Sardine on their businesses, such as deny them civil rights and civil liberties, Night of the Broken Glass. Peaceland of Bread is Lenin's slogan for the Russian Revolution, okay? Leon Troske is the muscle of the Russian Revolution. Lenin's the brain, Troske's the muscle, the military portion. The Wasteland, this is T.S. Eliot's book about the collapse of European civilization after World War I. You'll see it reflected in the art at the time. Animal Farm, how many people read Animal Farm? Yeah, great, Animal Farm, Orwell's book, dealing with Stalin and that situation. 1984, that's Orwell's book also, Big Brother's Watching You. Hey, Big Brother, good morning, watching you. Big Brother's listening to all your phone messages and everything else, it's called The Patriot Act. 1984 is also a David Bowie album, if you know that. You should know that. Lenin's Opportunity. Lenin's Opportunity, this is a crazy plan that works. Kaiser Wilhelm II, these military officials are saying, "What can we do to upset the Tsar in Germany? What can we do that would create chaos or disrupt the Tsar?" They come up with this plan, say, "Well, you've got that Fugitive, that guy, the exile from Russia, his name's Lenin. He's a revolutionist. What if we fly him, put him on a boxcar, a train, send him to Russia and release him? Maybe he can bring down the government." They do, and he does. It's a great plan. Don't ever count on that happening. Great plan. So that's Lenin's Opportunity. Now, the comprehensive portion. We'll do this essay first, we've got two essays. You're going to answer one, worth 30 points. So I'm just going to judge the damn questions, that's it. Okay? Here we go. First one is, explain the foundation of Western civilization. Explain the contributions important today. For that particular question, I got the other question about the Cold War. So this is just for those of you who yearned for the earlier portion of the class here or whatever. This might be easier, it might be harder, so this is the deal. The Foundation of Western Civ. Remember we came in with those foundation blocks, rise of civilization, Hebrews, Greeks, Romans, Christianity, then we had that mortar, that thousand-year period of the Dark Ages or Middle Ages. So we're talking about the foundation blocks of Western Civ. These are the foundation blocks of Western Civ. I'd answer this in a, in an essay question, I'd come in and say, "You know, the rise of civilization starts with the Paleolithic age, when people were the Old Stone Age, there were no mass. It's followed by the Neolithic age, which is Neo-New, and this is the rise of farming and villages. It's followed by civilization itself, the rise of civilization in Egypt, New Mesopotamia, the land between the rivers." The Hebrews give us a format of religion, one God, monotheistic. The, uh, Hebrews, uh, give us a format of religion, one God, Montesquik, uh, God of mercy, a God who's transcendent, above all, subject to none. The Greeks are going to give us democracy. The Romans are going to give us law. The, uh, uh, Christianity's going to give us the idea of global religion, because Rome fall from Christianity stand strong, and still with us today. Some of the major success stories of the world ever. So, uh, uh, global religion, which means as Western civilization expands, Christianity will always follow. The cross will always follow the flag, uh, while it will happen, okay? Then the other part of this is, and the importance today. She just simply come in and make the importance today. Um, the idea of law, uh, well, much of our law derives from the Romans. Uh, the Roman Catholic Church, much of their law was derived from the Romans also. Uh, the Greeks, the democracy, what we cherish today, what we're willing to fight in Greece for, where Greek democracy came from, we're willing to, uh, drive Islam out, we're willing to drive, uh, get to the Communists out of there. Uh, the Hebrews, this is the format of religion for the three major religions, the ones you see of Christianity, Islam, and Judaism. And then the rise of civilization, it got its startplace. Okay, this is the start. So that's one question. The, uh, discuss the, this is the other one. Discuss the Cold War rivalry with the, with the Soviet Union, Russia. Explain the different foreign policies, approaches, and results taken by Cold War presidents. I wanted to give you something that's simply what we're dealing with right now. This isn't learning anything else, you know all of this stuff for the, uh, the 100-point test. And so if I was going to do this, I'd come in, I'd do an introduction, I kind of define what the Cold War is, which we talked about earlier, definition. I'd come in and say, oh, foreign policies. So what you're going to do, what to do in your Cold War notes, is simply come in, and we've got our first policy, and this is containment. Uh, we're going to contain the Communists. We've got, uh, and for these policies, remember, for the test, we were going to say, uh, whose policy is it? What is the policy? What's the example? So for containment, we'd simply say, it's contain the Communists, not let them expand. Starts with Truman. That's always a policy of the United States towards communism, it's always containment. We've got some examples, Truman Doctrine, military assistance to Greece and Turkey. We've got the Marshall Plan, the European Recovery Program, is going to rebuild Europe, to contain the Communists. Then we jump into the Eisenhower years. We come up, uh, you could make the transition, John Foster Dulles, the mastermind of these, uh, of these policies. And so you come in with liberation, we're going to liberate the Communists, we're going to roll them back. Eisenhower Dulles, doesn't work. No, there's this place called East, uh, Germany and Hungary where it doesn't work. Mass Retaliation, we're bang for a buck, we're going to rely on, uh, atomic weapons as opposed to conventional forces. Brinksmanship, we're going to bring those Russians to the brink of war, they're going to back down, uh, because they're godless Communists. Uh, best example of this, going to be, uh, going to be, uh, Kennedy and the Cuban Missile Crisis. Dulles, he has these defense packs, mutual defense packs modeled after NATO. And, um, then we get down to, uh, Kennedy, counterinsurgency. Green Berets, they'll train other people to defend themselves. First use in Vietnam, let me tell you, didn't work very well. We end up sending our troops in, all we realized is they couldn't defend themselves, so we went in to defend them. In 1975, we're gone. So, this is, uh, the, uh, deal here, and, uh, let me read the question again. Discuss the Cold War rivalries with the Soviet Union, Russia. Explain the different foreign policies, approaches, and results taken by the Cold War president. So, uh, I conclude it just like a conclusion, and I basically, uh, say, uh, something to the point that all these policies, aside from containment, were just, uh, driven by politics and, and factors like that. And they're all failed policies, aside from containment. I'll leave it up to you if that worked, and remember China failed, so, okay? That's worth 30 points. Now, there's 20 points left. And here they come. There's identification questions. There's 10. You're going to answer five, they're worth four points apiece. I'm going to use some ideas from the, um, UCC 21, which we've been talking about. And so I'm going to, uh, use the ones that we probably have been struggled with. We used some of those. Primary sources, firsthand evidence, firsthand account. I've talked about historiography, the study of history, not the writing of history, but the study of history and the methods of history. Revisionism. Revisionism is the idea of replacing one interpretation with another, not replacing one source with another. Revisionism isn't about sources, it's about interpretation. Uh, so those are the kinds of things. The other one is that, uh, what determines the, uh, source? The historical question you're asking. What are you trying to, uh, achieve or learn? So I've got two or three off of there, out of the 10, okay? Uh, then I've got some of our early things we talked about, that I consider to just be the main situation of all this. So I've got a couple things from Origins. A leaky thing attached to the, uh, the start of the course here. Uh, something about the dinosaurs possibly. Uh, explain, uh, the extinction of the dinosaurs. What's that mean to us today? Dinosaurs die in climate, it gets too cold and it gets too warm. Uh, what have we got? We've got this global, uh, we've got this, uh, um, climate change, a deal, global, uh, climate change going on. We talked about nuclear winter, which would bring us to cold. We talked about, uh, also talked about the ozone, uh, depleting the ozone with aerosol cans. So, uh, so what does it mean to the world? So we learned something from the dinosaurs. I've also got a very abstract question. What is the final word in Orange? And that's, um, again, this is a, um, a thousand-page book. And remember, this is the end of the book. And, uh, it said, uh, you're on top of the, uh, Mbar State Building, a wind has swept you off, and you're falling to, uh, to a crash on the concrete, it's called gravity. But, uh, uh, what would be the last words you, uh, whimper out or yell out? And we all agree it's O something, and, uh, something like that, so. Uh, and then what kind of fluctuation would you have? Fluctuation. Would it be a, a period? Or would it be a mushroom cloud? Would it be an aerosol can? Uh, what kind of, uh, what kind of, uh, what kind of fluctuation might you have on that? So this is a question where there's no right answer. Where you get marked off on this, is that deal that we always have in history in our own personal lives. You say, this is what I think. You know, nobody gives a damn what you think unless you have something to back it up. And you can say, I think this because. So you'll say, I think the last word would be, and then you tell me why. Okay? And that's what people like to hear anyway, everybody's got an opinion, but thereby wants to know what that opinion might be. And here's the last one here. Don't get excited yet, this is the last call here, okay? And, uh, so I've got something like, what do I talk about? Classical humanism and, uh, faith. Faith, classical humanism. Talked about that, that's on the test. Uh, has some general information, uh, general deals, like industrial revolution, shift from hand tool to power tool, machine power replaces animal power. Add imperialism, uh, one country controls another country politically, economically, and culturally. And it's got in Eli Whitney, which changed the, the history of the United States with cotton gin, interchangeable parts. Had a war, uh, set off in, uh, May 14th and 15th, 1948, in Israel. Israel gives us, uh, freedom, the next day the Arabs attack. And then I've got Darwinism, and social Darwinism. Darwinism, natural selection, uh, hercules cancer, uh, social Darwinism, survival of the best, whether you're surviving because of your physical, uh, situation or your economic situation. And then finally, I have, uh, is another possibility, the modern state system, remember? The modern state system, who could forget it? Uh, the balance of power, all countries deserve the right to exist, uh, regardless of ability to defend themselves. All countries have the right to make their own foreign policy. Those are some examples, main examples, there's enough of them on there that you'll be able to handle that no problem. And to quote the Grateful Dead, what a long straight trip it's been. Dick Gere, hey, see you next time.